We're ready, Wayne. Good evening, everyone, and welcome. Welcome to this forum for the candidates for the Independent School District 623 Board. We're delighted to be able again --
(audience clapping)
Oh, the mic's not on? Do I have to push a button? No, the green light's on now, so it should be. Now is it better?
It's just recording, it's not made to fight your voice.
Oh. Let me pull this a little closer. Closer, closer? Better? Okay. So we'll start over. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this forum for the candidates for Independent School District 623 Board. We're delighted to be able to see -- to again see many of you in person, and this is a wonderful turnout. Thank you all for coming. My name is Florence Sprigg. I will be the moderator tonight. I'm a League-trained moderator, and while I'm a member of the League of Women Voters, Roseville Area, the sponsor of this forum, I am a resident of Maplewood, and I live in ISD 622. Love them or hate them, I don't get to vote on tonight's candidates.[84.61][84.61](Laughter) The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan volunteer political organization. Our mission is to work for a more informed and engaged electorate. We do not ever endorse candidates. We do study issues and take positions upon which we may take action. We believe that the values, knowledge, and commitment of our elected officials greatly impact the success of our communities. Thus, it is essential for the public to better understand the views, opinions, and commitments of people running for elected office. It is this understanding that better equips voters to make informed decisions. We greatly appreciate the candidates taking the time to be here tonight, and the audience, whether viewing live, viewing later on a broadcast, rebroadcast, for their time and attention. All opinions presented tonight are those of the candidates and not those of the League of Women Voters. The candidates participating in tonight's forum have all agreed to the forum rules, which were included in their invitation to participate, and I know that they will give us a respectful and informative evening. The candidates have drawn numbers for the order of opening statements of up to two minutes, then we'll go to question and answers. Many, many questions have been emailed in.[171.12][171.12](Laughter) And I have many more. So please do not be offended if you don't hear your wording. I will try to cover as many topics as possible, but clearly, we cannot use all of the questions that have been submitted. And if your topic of interest does not get touched upon, feel free to check out the websites and campaign literature of the candidates, or contact them individually. Some of them will stick around afterwards, or you can find them at other events. Okay, and now I've lost my place. Okay. Unless I otherwise note, candidates will have up to a minute and a half to respond to each question. There's timers seated across from me, who will hold up a 30-second warning sign and then a stop sign when their allotted time is up. Candidates should then finish their sentence and stop. The forum is being broadcast live by both the school district and Nine North, and is being recorded for later viewing by the public. You'll be able to find rebroadcast information on the Nine North website, or the school district website, or the League of Women Voters website after a couple of days, once it's settled, and follow their links. Okay. We are gathered tonight at Obetu Tetcha Education Center. As a part of this new day, we need to acknowledge that our communities are located on the ancestral lands of the Dakota and Ojibwe peoples, acquired by theft and deceit and forced by genocidal forced removal of populations. The colonial and racist ideologies and systems of the past are embedded in our current systems in subtle and not-so-subtle ways, and require our mindfulness to create greater equity. Before we begin, we all have one last chance to make sure that our cellphone ringers are turned off.[293.37][293.37](Laughter) Thank you. Okay. There are seven candidates vying for three positions. We had anticipated having four, and if Mr. Mayor shows up, is just running late, we will be happy to include him, or anyone, any of the other candidates, in the remaining portion of the program. They are seated alphabetically to my left, and the -- well, first, let me name all seven. The seven candidates are Todd Anderson, Mike Bogaszewski, Rose Juan Muichu, Carl Crump, Alan Holasek, Vaughn Klingenberg, and Adam Mayer. All candidates who filed for this office were invited to the forum, but sometimes circumstances prevent them from participating. We had anticipated having four of the seven with us tonight, but right now, we have three. Carl Crump and Alan Holasek have submitted opening and closing statements, which I will read at the appropriate segment. Please reach out to any candidate if you would like more information about their positions. With that, let's begin with the opening statements. Timer's ready? Okay. So they've drawn numbers, and the first one will now be Todd Anderson.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Todd Anderson, and I'm currently clerk of the Roseville Area School Board. I want to thank the League of Women Voters of Roseville Area for sponsoring this forum. We have an important school board election coming up in November, and I'm asking for your vote for one more term. Over the past year, we've been working with the community on a new strategic plan for Roseville Area schools, and I want to continue on the board and provide some leadership as we roll it out to the greater community. I've been a Roseville resident for 20-plus years, and I'm a parent of two children who attended Roseville Area schools. I am invested in this community. I've been endorsed by Outfront Minnesota Action and Education Minnesota Roseville. These are my continued priorities: equitable student achievement, making sure all students and lifelong learners reach their full potential, and we do this by eliminating barriers and obstacles to learning. We need to support our teachers and their professional development, especially professional development related to the science of reading. As a school district, we will be focusing even more on literacy this coming school year, with investments in new curriculum. I also want to focus on continuing our district's strong fiscal management and responsible budgeting. It has been a privilege and an honor serving on the Roseville Area School Board. Early voting has already started, and the general election is on Tuesday, November 7. If you want to continue to have stable and reliable leadership for Roseville Area schools, please reelect Todd Anderson to Roseville Area School Board. You can email me at tjhanderson@hotmail.com, or call me at 651-278-3036. You can also check out my Facebook campaign page. I look forward to our time this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. The next opening statement from Rose Chu.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Rose Juan Muichu, and I actually got a little emotional tonight, because I'm thinking about what I'm doing here, and thinking about 44 years, I have to do some math here, 44 years in the United States, and what my parents had to do to sacrifice for me to be where I am. So I feel very privileged right now to be in this position, to be an educator all my life, and then to have served on the school board these last four years. I couldn't remember, I mean, I can't remember, I can't believe that it was four years ago that I decided to do this, and I remember thinking about how I've been in different roles as an educator, and being, and doing a lot of statewide work, but I've always thought that I always want to stay grounded on what is actually happening on the ground. So being a school board member was another way for me to grow as an educator, to make sure that I understand what is going on and support the great work that is going on. So I've been a little Canada's resident since 2010, I think, and been in Minnesota for 32 years. I came during the snowstorm of 1991.[571.16][571.16](Laughter) And I didn't think that when I joined, that we would be, I would be actually, in the first two years, being a board member over the pandemic. That was interesting. That really, really got me to understand what it takes to run a school, and what, how school is really part of a larger community. The work that we did over the pandemic in order to serve the community is, I have talked to so many people, and they go, "Oh, I didn't know that you'll do that. We didn't know that you served meals. We didn't know that you, you know, you bust around and make sure the students get their homework," for example. So to me, kind of being a school board member is a privilege, and I would love to continue to do that. I really struggled with the decision. But ultimately, I wanted to continue this great work that is happening.
And your time is up.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Rose. Okay, and the next opening statement from Mike Bogaszewski.
Hi, I'm Mike Bogaszewski. As my colleagues here, I'm running for reelection to the board for my third term. You know, when I first ran, even two times ago, people asked me, "Why are you doing this?" Because their kids were older or on their way out, our son is in his 30s, our daughter's in his 20s. Like Rose and Todd, I just, I love this community, and I think that we want it to be strong, and the heart of a strong community is strong and successful schools. That's what it's all about. That's why families want to stay here. That's why people want to move in here. And I think the district is strong. We've been successful in attracting teachers and attracting staff into this district. Teachers want to work in this district, and I'm very, very proud and privileged to have been part of that for the last eight years, helping reach our new mission and vision statements, our strategic plan going forward, solidifying our commitment to equity and equity vision, really working to bring down those predictable disparities among BIPOC kids, continuing to work to just eradicate any kind of anti-LGBTQ+ or transgender feelings that might be in the district or the community. That work has to continue, and we've begun it, we've got a good start on it, but I really want to be a part of continuing and helping serve the kids and the students. My wife and I have lived here for 32 years. My professional life, I do business services with health care institution in the state. My whole career has been with hospitals or health care. So I bring those skill sets, I think, technical skill sets, finance administration, maybe some leadership, all of that. But I think part of it is just the experience and the time and the commitment to do the job, and to make sure you're here and present, you know, in the seats, when you're supposed to be in the seats, fighting for the kids and fighting for the schools. That's what it's all about. So I really do hope for your vote to reelect me, and I'll be honest, frankly, my incumbent colleagues. This is kind of a different election this year. So MikeBForschools.com, or MikeBForschools@comcast.net. I'd really appreciate your vote this fall to continue the work that I've been privileged to help start. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the opening statements for those in attendance. I will now read the two that have been submitted from the, some of the other candidates who are not with us tonight. From Carl Crump. Thank you to the moderator and to the League of Women Voters for giving Roseville School Board candidates a chance to address voters ahead of the 2023 election. I regret I am unable to attend in person due to a prior commitment. I'm Carl Crump. As the parent of a Roseville student, I have a lens into our schools that most residents don't get to see. I get firsthand accounts of what's happening in the classroom, and I hear from a wide range of families who are candid about their concerns. With test scores declining and school violence increasing, this is no time to pat each other on the back. We need new leadership that welcomes differing viewpoints to the table to find creative solutions for the sake of our kids. I never expected to run for school board, but certain circumstances make me feel that I need to step up and work for positive change. It concerns me that even though according to the 2022 ISD 623 executive audit summary, we spent $20,000 a year per student, over half of our kids aren't reading at grade level, and two-thirds of them are behind in math. And any parent would be troubled to know that the police were called to our high school over 200 times last year. We can't sit back and wait for someone else to do something. That's why I added my name to this year's ballot. If I'm elected to the board, I will prioritize academics so that all kids achieve. That's Carl Crump's opening statement. Now, an opening statement from Alan Holasek. I would like first to thank the League of Women Voters for giving me the opportunity to address everyone in attendance tonight. I'm sorry that I am unable to attend in person due to a scheduling conflict. My name is Alan Holasek. When I was young, I was diagnosed with autism, but I never allowed that to hold me back. I graduated from Concordia St. Paul with honors, directed high school theater for seven years, and I now work as a business associate for a financial institution. I am running for the Roseville School Board because I am very concerned about the direction of our schools. Our community has been very generous to our school district. We currently spend $20,000 per student. Yet despite this ample funding, there has been no improvement in the reading and math proficiency rates for our students for the past decade. For the first time in the history of our school district, less than half of our students are proficient in reading, and only 38% are proficient in math. In addition, violence has become more serious problem. Last year alone, the high school had to be placed on partial lockdown twice, and over 200 phone calls were made to the police from the high school. Many parents and community members have raised concerns to the school board, but instead of listening to and acting on these concerns, the school board voted unanimously to eliminate community input from televised school board meetings. Our community deserves better. If I am elected, I will prioritize academics, school safety, and ensure the tax dollars our community pours into schools are managed responsibly and effectively. That was the opening statement from Alan Holasek. Okay. Now, we can move to the question-and-answer portion of our program. And as I said, the questions have been pouring in, both before the evening and tonight. Thank you all for your thoughtfulness. I know this, this all matters a great deal to the community. So let's begin. Let's just dive right in. Okay. First one, okay. So I'm going to sort of try to blend two of about 15 questions on the book content in our libraries. Do you support the breadth of book choices available in school libraries and classroom reading lists? If not, what kind of restrictions, excuse me, should be placed, on what types of books? Specifically, they're looking at, another questioner is looking at having books available, both fiction and nonfiction, where characters are lesbian, gay, bisexual, or transgender, books that address racism, addiction, mental health, and trauma. So responses for this question, I'm sorry I didn't tell you that first, begins with Todd Anderson.
Thank you. I'll just flat-out start by saying, I believe in having a wide array of books available to students, covering all kinds of topics. Books need to be age-appropriate, of course, let's use a little common sense here. But, you know, I trust our skilled educators. I trust our professional media specialists to be involved with that process. And I'll just use blunt language. You know, banning books is just stupid, folks. It's just stupid. It's short-sighted, and it cuts off knowledge and learning. Why do we, as a school district, why would we want to do that? I'm keeping it short.
Thank you. Next response on this question, Mike Bogaszewski.
Well, what he said, plus, I gotta admit, it's unfathomable to me that we'd be talking about banning or censoring books in 2023, and I, I understand the desire of parents or families to try and protect kids from what they might consider harmful material. But, you know, we can't. For one thing, the law forbids us from not allowing a kid to get a book, again, if it's age-appropriate, if they want it. There's Supreme Court decisions that back that up, because it's their right as a citizen, and the family's right as a citizen, to have access to those books. Plus, you know, let's be honest, right? Let's call it what it is. Some people want to ban books specifically that they believe promote an LGBTQ+ lifestyle. It's ridiculous. It's silly. I mean, it's, those, there are books that have characters that identify that way, but that's their stories, too. I don't know why we fear that. If anything, to me, they're great teaching aids, and I also believe that we should have the full breadth of materials available for students and our kids, again, as age-appropriate. That's it. I got nothing else.
Thank you. And the next response on this question, from Rose Chu.
I was just thinking of the case that we just had, when there was a request for the list of books, and how some of these books should be banned. And I think about the process that we had to go through. As school board members, we are not there on the day-to-day. That's not our job. That's the job of management. Our only employee is really our superintendent, and she is delegated with the work of figuring out what, what is happening actually day-to-day in the school. So even if I say, you know, "We should ban," I would definitely want to make sure that the superintendent, working with the folks who are hired to do this, hired with the expertise of media, hired with the expertise of understanding what is appropriate, would actually get together, and there is a process, to say, "Okay, there is a concern. Let's look at that. Let's look at whether the concern is real or not. Let's, let's go through that, and then figure it out." And I know that if there were decisions that say there were some things, and maybe it was missed, it will come back to the board for a vote, so that we are in line with our equity vision. So just a reminder of our role in the process. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to do a follow-up on this, and maybe just a minute, though they may not need that. Several of you have mentioned age-appropriate books. What is the role of the parents in the community in determining what is age-appropriate? And we'll just, same, same order as the first time.
That's a good follow-up. I think parents have a role. I don't have a specific age in mind, but they certainly have a role, but, you know, I still, what I've got to lean back on, as Rose has pointed out, as a school board member, I've got to lean on that day-to-day, you know, maybe it's a parent working with staff, but not being overbearing, or telling a staff member what to do. But we have these, I trust our educators, you know, to do the right thing, following our equity vision, and I believe they are. We have paid media specialists who are going to make sure that things are appropriate. I don't have this age rage, age rage in my head, but, yeah, I mean, parents have some saying it, but I have to rely on our educators and our, and our staff, our wonderful staff here in Roseville.
Thank you. Mike Bogaszewski, same.
I'll, similar to that, I think that parents do have, obviously, the right to guide their children in what they feel is appropriate for them. I'd like to think that they also then have discussions and dialogues with the teachers. And if they look at the curriculum and look at the reading lists for a class or a course when their kids come home, and they find something that they're just not sure of or comfortable with, call the teacher, contact the teacher, talk it out, find out what the reason is behind it being part of that reading list for the year. The teachers will be very receptive to that. So we're not about taking away parents' rights. We want to engage parents. There is technically, you know, age guidances that are often published as part of a book publication, you know, on the title or as the understanding, and those serve as a general guideline, I think, so that if some, if a book says, you know, "For 12 or above," then, no, it would not be appropriate to have it be for younger kids available in our libraries. But beyond that, I think parents certainly have the right to engage with the teachers and understand why a book is there, and what the purpose is, and then make a decision for what's right for their family.
Thank you. And Rose Chu.
Yeah. In my work, over 20-something years as an educator, parent involvement has been a key belief that I have in all the work that I've done. I've done, like, math nights, I've done family nights, I've done all sorts of things where we want to engage parents, and I welcomed parents in my classroom when I was a teacher. And we had lots of conversation about why certain things are happening, why, you know, what just happened the other day, when my, my kids say that somebody spilled water on all your, this actually happened, spilled water in all your calculators. Okay? So I have those conversations. That's the partnership. I call parents when something actually working right. I send postcards home to students to say, "Let your parents know, you did really well these last two weeks." Okay? So to me, education, the idea of partnership of parents, I know that this district talks about that quite a bit, and I know that we are trying to do that. And so, again, it's not about taking anybody's right, but it's about being in partnership, about what is appropriate, and if there are concerns, please talk to us, right? Please talk to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we're going to shift to a different topic. And responses on the next question, well, okay, since, since we're down to three, you're right up again first, Rose. Little Rose Chu will be starting the next responses. Okay. What does school safety mean to you? In what ways would you work to protect our students' learning environment?
When I think of the word "safety," and I remember responding to this, safety has different ways for different students, and different families, and different communities. For, there could be physical safety, and that's what sometimes people talk about, the physical safety, but there's also mental safety. There are many communities and many students, sometimes they feel like they are not safe, not the physical, but the fact that maybe mentally they are not safe, because they can't be themselves. Okay? So, so we've got to think broader about what safety means, and so we do have policies in place that try to protect our students in all those areas, and I know we also talk about the emotional safety. Do students feel like they belong to the school? Okay? So when we think about safety, I think of that broadly, so that when we think about solutions, we can also think of that broadly and connect it, right? So it's not just about the physical, it's not just about the emotional, mental, but holistically. And we do have policies, and the district's role is to implement those policies for what happens on a day-to-day level.
Thank you. Next response will be Todd Anderson.
Thank you. I'm the board rep on our district's safety and security team, and I, I see firsthand the passion that everyone has to keep, you know, our students and staff safe. You know, there's local law enforcement on this committee, there's community members, there's staff, and there's quite a bit of student voice. We're very proactive. I've been proactive serving on this team. It's, and with the approach, it's working with every single school's emergency response team. It's, you know, it's, it's more than just those safety plans, it's more than just locked exterior doors and reunification plans. It's also about violence protection, working with staff. It's about preventing trauma, you know, let's work with students to prevent trauma, let's screen for trauma. How about professional development around crisis prevention, which we're already doing? It's, you know, there's an anonymous reporting system for bullying at Roseville Area High School. There's, there's all kinds of things that people, people don't realize that are happening, you know, in this community to keep our students safe, and keep our staff safe as well. You know, we live in an open and free society. We can 100% guarantee that nothing will ever happen. Students bring all of our society's issues into the schools, but I think our kids are safe. I think one of the big parts of that is they have trusted relationships with the adults in our schools, and I've been a part of that, and I will continue to be a part of that. Thank you.
Thank you. And the next response to this question, Mike Bogaszewski.
Sure. Again, that, plus, you know, I'll talk about physical safety. We have a great relationship, for example, with the Roseville Police Department, and with, you know, resource officers, and a relationship with, with the police to help be in our school, be part of our school, partner with us. The officer that we've had in the high school and in the middle school is seen really as an educator. Their role is to help kids make right decisions and right choices, to keep other kids out of harm's way. So it's been a great relationship. I think we're very supportive of that, and maybe some of you were involved in the community discussions we had a couple of years ago about that, because it was a very hot topic at the time. So we're comfortable in that, I think, what Todd said. Physical safety, also, you know, again, thanking the community for the, the bond levy a few years ago. Many of our schools, we've actually physically redesigned the entrance areas to have safer ways and safer entrances in through the school, to have kind of limited access and limited access points. So we've, we've done that. And I'll say it here, I think that safety also was our biggest concern the last time we were, before, when we were running, in the four years since we won before, what happened? The pandemic. You know, safety was our, was at the heart of everything we did around masking, requiring vaccinations, all of that, and all had to do with keeping our staff safe, our kids safe, our community safe. So it's foremost on our mind. It's, it's our duty to provide a safe environment for all kids, physically and emotionally. Thank you.
Thank you. 30-second follow-up on this, please. A 30-second. Thirty seconds for a follow-up on this. Does the recent firearm incident at Roseville Area High School change your approach to thinking about safety? Same order, please, so that began with Rose, right? Yes.
Actually, the more I learn about what happened and how we responded to it, and it just happened very recently, right, so there's a lot, there's still a lot to uncover, I'm actually very proud of what happened. There's a lot that sometimes we don't know, and we make judgment about it, and, I mean, it's a little concerning, right, because it actually happened, and we were in the news. And yet, I ask lots of questions, we ask lots of questions, to try to understand what actually happened, what can we learn, what things went well, what things we could do better next time. There's always learning. But I do know the fact that the situation was taken care of really, really says a lot about what happened.
Thank you.
Fast third seconds. Sorry.
Okay. So let's see, now I've got myself all confused. Okay, so then we go to Todd, right? Yes.
Yep, thank you. My position hasn't changed. I'll go back to, yeah, scary situation. That high school has about 2,300 students in it, larger than some towns. There's going to be some conflicts, but I think it was handled rather well. And I'll go back to, again, the weight of the world, all of the world's problems around these students, and they bring them every single day. I think we handled things very well. I love the fact we do have a great partnership with the city and the police department. They were there, they helped a few situations, and I'm proud with the communications that went out. You know, yeah, I wish I could guarantee that nothing will ever happen again, but I think for reasons that we've all listed, there's so many measures in place, but...
And we just ran out of time.
Sorry.
Because I only gave you a little bit for the follow-up.
We need more time.
I just want to get through a lot of things. So, okay, Mike Bukasiewski.
So, obviously, it's an important question, at the same, and we might be proud of what happened, I think at the same time, we don't want to just be complacent about it. Just kind of following a comment Rose made earlier, the way the board works is, we've not met since then.
Yeah.
So there's no board position. We haven't had a chance to debate this, or talk about it, or think about it, or see if we need to change or strengthen policies. I believe we'll have an upcoming discussion about overall school safety, perhaps triggered by this event, at an upcoming board session, or a study session, so we could talk about it and see if we want to change anything. Right now, we haven't voted or spoken as a board. You know, I think it's obviously concerning the parents, so whether or not it's concerning to us, I think we do need to talk about it, address it, discuss it in a way that's open and transparent to the public, so they can see what we're thinking and have some sense of where it might go, so.
Okay, thank you. Okay, responses for the next question, we'll begin with Mike Bukasiewski. Oh, okay. Could you, Mike's got his, speak up and maybe get your mics closer to you, because people in the back are having trouble hearing. Oh, you can't hear me either? Oh, no. Now that matters. Okay. So try to keep your mics close, and if Wayne is listening, I don't know what you can adjust, because they say the people in the back are having trouble hearing.
And what are we getting, I'm sorry, two minutes for this?
A minute and a half.
Minute and a half.
Okay, so for the next one, Mike will start. Okay, and we're going to, okay, achievement. It's often difficult to determine achievement, and as we heard in the, you know, do you rely on standardized tests, do you rely on personal information from teachers, you know, how students feel about it, how parents feel about it, but as we saw in the other two opening statements that I read, it's a great concern to parents. And, okay, so here we go. Okay. So with, to read, this kind of reiterates what they said. With District 623, grade level reading proficiency at 49%, arithmetic at 38%, science at 33%, money and the spending $20,000 per student money doesn't seem to be a problem. What can we do to reverse the trend of...
Me first, right?
Yep.
Okay. Minute and a half won't do it, but I'll try. So first of all, it's a little disingenuous, because we are within a few percentage points of the entire state averages for these. So if you look at the state performance in MCA math and reading, we're with them. We plummeted after the pandemic, we're trying to work our way back. I think relative to the state, we've made some gains in reading over the last couple of years, and in fact, we've put in place a program called Letters to help, the very teaching methodology our teachers use based on brain science, that is part of what the state is now going to mandate with their new read legislation that the legislature passed just this year. So to just throw out that loose fact, oh, we're at this percentage, compared to the state where they are. And, you know, is there flaws in the way it's tested? Does it mean the entire state of Minnesota is at 50% or less? Well, yeah, the way they measure it. I think the other issue here, it's a real one, I'm just going to throw it out there, these tests are not an accurate measure of the whole student, nor are they accurate measure of the entire school. And I think it's going to be even more, less accurate in the future, because we're now in a situation where students have the right to opt out of taking the test. This last year, I think only about a third of our students took the test. We can't force them to do it. So at some point, someone's going to say, well, what good are these scores if only 30% of the students self-select to take them in the first place? Secondly, the $20,000 is a disingenuous number, because that's the entire district, including things like community ed, running the pool, the building we're in, the Meals at Home program, the older adults program. So they just took the whole number and divided that, it's very disingenuous, that's all I'm going to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next response on the achievement question will be from Todd Anderson.
All right. First and foremost, I want to mention that we all up here, we're all very proud of our well-rounded students. That's who's graduating out of these schools. I know what the purpose of these assessments are for, I know what these MCAs are for, it's kind of to measure growth and development, I know why we have them, but again, they're a snapshot. And personally, I know we're graduating wonderful, well-rounded kids who are ready to lead, ready to be global citizens, social and emotional learning is off the charts. Roseville area schools, like most school districts, did experience a dip in scores. We know we have work to do, we have challenges ahead. I'm confident, as I said in my opening, scores will improve with our new science of reading curriculum and focus on literacy. You know, we're focusing on effective, you know, professional development. Literacy is a solvable issue. I'm also confident, that's something we haven't mentioned tonight, is the implementation of our very successful AVID program into our elementary schools this year, going into fifth and sixth grade. You know, I think that will help with our scores. AVID stands for advancement via individual determination, and it contains systems for all students to learn how to organize materials, manage time, and to think critically. So I think there are steps in place, and I'm hopeful with our new focus. Thank you.
Thank you. And the final response on this question, Rose Chu.
We have a minute and a half over, big question. I think I'm going to address it a little differently. I am concerned myself, too, as an educator. This is the work that I've been doing all my life, that the disparities that we have are still too predictable. This is the reason why I am continuing to do this work. However, school is not like an isolated system, in a very complex system. Those disparities that we talk about that are predictable are also predictable with many other systems, whether in health, in employment, in housing. So it's not to say that somehow we are not being responsible, but rather, we've got to look at this at a system level and say, we are part of, we are a microcosm of a larger system, where some of those disparities are happening that are also costing what is happening in school. And so we've got a lot of work to do. And like my colleagues say, those measures are very, like, one-time, like a snapshot, it does not give a fuller picture of what is going on for a student, for what is going on in teaching, for what is going on in a school. And I know I was out of time. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we're going to go a very different direction. We have a question from a student at Roseville Area High School about something that's important, I think, to a lot of our young people. This is looking at climate and sustainability. What do you see as the school district's role in addressing issues of climate and sustainability? For example, is consideration being given to electric or hybrid buses, reduction of food waste and the collection of organics for composting, the use of solar energy, improved energy efficiency in our buildings, or what else might you add to that mix?
Who's first?
Oh, sorry, I didn't tell you who was first. Todd.
Thank you, I hope to be first. Folks, we have a very active, wonderful partnership with the RAS Climate Change Student Group, part of our Student Voice program. They have come before us several times, and we definitely are aware of asks, we're very well aware of things that we should be doing, and I look, I'm very hopeful that we will continue to do some of these things. What we're doing right now is, we signed a resolution to participate in the Minnesota Green Step Schools program. We're participating in wonderful farm-to-table lunch programs. We are recycling. We currently have solar panels, we just saw a presentation on this. We have solar panels at Betutetja, Harambe, Edgerton, and underway at Little Canada, and there will probably be more on the future, once we get through with some of the long-term facilities maintenance and HVAC on the roofs. And to address the electric buses, I think every single person on the school board, we support electric buses. It's the way of the future. But, you know, sometimes it's also our role, we've got to look at finances carefully, we have to look at budgeting carefully, and, you know, honestly, it's contract timing. I know we'll be going out to bid on next spring, and that's something that we are going to completely revisit. But everyone on the board, it's not electric busing, it's kind of timing, financing, and it's the way of the future, so.
Thank you. Next response from Mike Bukasiewski.
Yeah, so the short answer to, are you looking at and considering all those, is yes, we are, including the buses, including food waste and everything. Four years ago, Curtis Johnson fellow member and I were at the MSBA conference, we had no solar panels. We saw a presentation as to how they could be done cost-effectively, we brought it back. We worked, and the administration and our business director, Sherry Thompson, worked hard for a year, year and a half, negotiating, digging into, to find a way that we could get those panels in a way that was not only cost-neutral, but really saving us money in terms of the package. So we'll go through a similar process with the electric buses. We don't own our buses, maybe people don't know that, we have a contract with a bus company. And so, right now, it would be secondhand, we'd need to convince them to convert their whole fleet to electric buses, if they were going to do that. As Todd said, we have a contract renewal coming up with them, we'll see what kind of leverage we have with them to do it. But we are fiscal stewards, we do need to make sure that we spend good use of the taxpayers' dollars. So while we want to model, I think, good stewardship and green awareness, we do, we want the district to be a model for that, we can't do it in a way that's also wasteful or too cost-effective with our taxpayer dollars. So that's kind of the situation we're in as a board, that's our responsibility. But we wish we could do it tomorrow, if we had the funding to do it, or as technology gets improved and innovated, becomes more cost-effective, we believe in that as a serious long-term goal for the district.
Thank you. Next response from Rose.
Short answer is yes, 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 and yes. I actually, if anybody who knows me, I'm kind of considered the green police in my personal life, because I actually do zero-waste events for free, just for fun, because I believe in it. People who know me know that I'm like, okay, we've got to work on this for the future of our students and for the planet, right? So I think, as my colleagues say, the tension is always the fiscal versus kind of all the things we wish. And I have to say, if I think about the solar panel example, right, things are going to get cheaper and cheaper. And that's how we got to where we are with the solar panels, because it didn't seem fiscally possible in the beginning. And I wasn't even a school board yet at the time, but I remember coming into that discussion, and there was some tension, because it's like, can we do it? But, so we've got to be patient, and so we ask the community to be patient with us, that we are looking into this as best we can, with the resources that we can, with all the programs that we can. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So with only three of you, you end up repeating, so Rose Chu will begin the responses for the next one. Okay. What changes would you make to better support the mental health of students, teachers, and administrators?
This has been almost a buzzword lately, in terms of how the pandemic especially has impacted students, families, adults, all of us, right, everyone. And I do know that at the district level, we are really working on social-emotional learning in terms of one of our strategic goals, to make sure that our students are, as I talk about, safe, right, safe emotionally, safe feeling like they belong, right? And that's important. And again, our role is to ask lots of questions of our management, okay? This is our goal, if this is our vision, for our students to feel like they belong, to feel like they are emotionally safe to be in our district, then we need updates, and we ask lots of questions to make sure that that is happening, okay? We are not the one who say, oh, you know what, I like this program, let's go do it. But rather, we want to ask, I always say, we ask lots of questions, because that's our role.
Thank you. Next response will be Todd Anderson.
Thank you. For some of the same similar reasons that my colleague just mentioned, I kind of lumped this under, you know, safety, physical safety of our students, and just kind of the mental and social and history of our students. We have professional development around mental health. I know with our last round of the operating levy, thanks for generous community, we're able to focus a bit more on paraprofessionals to help staffing up to address some mental health issues of our students. You know, again, I think it goes back to, I think I mentioned under the school safety topic, that I think for the most part, our students feel, you know, like they're trusted, they've got good relationships with the staff, that's a big part of mental health, helping students when they're struggling. Our special ed programs, there's a lot that goes into it, but I know it is a focus, it's under safety, not just the physical safety, but the mental health and the safety of our students.
Thank you. And the final response on this question, Mike Bukasiewski.
Yeah, so I think in general, we do do a lot around SEL, social-emotional learning programs for kids, awareness, professional development for teachers, and the social-emotional learning and well-being of our teachers and our staff. So I can't think of a time when the superintendent would have come to us with an idea to expand a program or purchase a program that we've said no, if it has a direct impact on this. I think it gets at, you know, spending frankly, too. You know, we do have counselors, we do have folks on board to help kids. Our specific special ed programs are excellent. In fact, I think we're still a destination district for many families to come here, to take advantage of some of the courses that we have in some of the buildings and some of the schools. So from a kid's perspective, in terms of teaching learners who have, you know, concerns in those areas, we're a model for the metro area. One other thing that nobody, that my colleagues haven't mentioned yet, I think another thing that we do as a board that people don't realize is we lobby at the legislature. And for years and years, the truth is that the money that we get that's targeted for mental health programs doesn't cover it. And so we have to take out of the general fund and basically cheat from the general fund in order to support the mental health stuff. So it's been an ongoing battle of school boards across the state with the legislature to fully fund mental health within Minnesota, and they haven't done it yet. Even with the increases this year, it fell far short from making up for the 20- or 30-year gap that developed, just by not keeping up with inflation even over the last couple of decades. So we do that, too. We lobby strongly with our legislators to pass that and fully fund mental health programming in the state. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and responses for the next one are going to begin with Mike. Okay. Mental health is a particular problem, I think, for LGBTQ students. What is the role of schools in helping youth learn, whoops, okay, since I started reading that, we'll merge these two. What is the role of schools in helping youth learn about students different from themselves? And what can the school districts do to protect the safety and confidentiality of LGBTQ students? of LGBTQ students?
Well, I think the role is to provide a safe and welcoming environment for all, so that students aren't afraid to express their identity. And so there's part of learning, I think, there, and exposure to other types of folks than one might be themselves, just from being with people, being able to learn that, wow, you know, just because Mike's got brown eyes instead of blue eyes, he's still, you know, maybe an okay guy to be with. So I think that's some of it. I think that, you know, we teach about sexuality and health courses, et cetera, you know, appropriately, without any bias or anything like that. So there's that role. And I think that we just provide an environment for that. So as the board, we fully support the policy that says we are welcoming for all, and we need to address issues if they arise. I think it's part of the safety issue, too. And what was the second? Can you repeat the second part?
It was about the safety and confidentiality.
Oh, yeah. So again, we are confidential to the degree that we certainly need to be from the law's perspective, and as makes common sense, just in building a trusting environment, a trusting relationship with the kids and the teachers, so that we are trusted, you know, teachers, trusted adults, that they can share things within a safe environment. Thank you.
Thank you. Next response from Todd Anderson.
Thanks. Agree with my colleague. And I think what I'll add is that, and this kind of ties into community input, community input changes. One of the things that we did is we changed our format. We, as a school board, value community input. We listen intently. We want to hear about issues facing our schools. We have every right to change the format, however, if it becomes a platform of hate, and specifically directed toward our LGBQ2, excuse me, LGBQT-plus students or staff, you know, or any other underrepresented groups. We didn't take community input away, but that was a specific thing we did to protect our students, because they were being attacked. Period.
Yeah. Thank you. And the final response on this question from Rose Chu.
Yeah. And I would continue down that path about the community input. We changed the platform, partly because I think most people do not realize that when community gives us input, by law, we do not respond right there, because we speak with one voice. So if it is not in the agenda, we listen, we make notes, and we oftentimes actually, either then, if it is a topic to say, wow, do we want to have a vote about this? Do we want to have a position about it? Do we need to learn more about it? It becomes a topic of the work-study. And then when it becomes a vote, that is public, right? So most people don't realize that when you come provide community input, we cannot respond right there and then. So when it become, when it's one way, and when the weather is of hate, we can't have our parents and family who are listening in, and this being broadcast, hear this, and have no other ways to respond to that. So, oh my God, wow. Okay. So I just need you to know, when I was a teacher educator, so I trained other teachers, this topic came up. And what I would tell my teachers is that if your personal view may not align, it doesn't matter. It is our duty as a professional to make sure every kid in your room feels like they belong, and that they can be themselves. Okay?
Thank you. Okay. Now I'd like to throw in a few, what I call lightning round questions, just to touch on topics that have been presented as sort of, they've been phrased as yes/no, so we're going to go with a yes/no, and you can have a sentence.
Yes, no, and one sentence.
Yeah, that's right.
Yes, ma'am.
And, or anyway, or I guess you do have a third option of, you've got to be kidding. Okay. Well, let's just take a few of these. We'll start these with Todd, go down the row, and then the next one will be Mike, and go shift. I'm not going to try. Okay. So, okay, first one, okay. Should students in middle school and high school be allowed to have their cell phones at their desks during classes?
I, because I've had kids, I'm going to say no. I just, you know, I trust our kids, but I just, I think they can be distracting. I just, I guess my lightning quick answer is no.
I share that, no. I think that, I don't know what the policy is. I don't know, do we allow that? The superintendent's in the back of the room here. I don't know what we allow. But I would say, I trust our kids, but I don't trust the power of those phones to draw their attention away, so.
Wow, this is great. We have a differing answer.
Ah, there you go.
As an educator, I trust the educators in the classroom to make those decisions, because those, it could be a tool, if used appropriately.
Thank you.
If used appropriately.
Okay, I'm going to cheat. This isn't a policy. It's not a board policy. So we don't, you know, we don't tell the teachers what to do. It's not a policy.
Okay, the next one.
If you knew us at all, there's no lightning round quick.
Okay, next one. Does the school district have the right to monitor student activity on social media?
Is it me still? No, it's me. I would say, if monitor means, like, put a chip in there 25 hours a day, no. But I do think we have the right to have policies or practice in place that if a student does something that's dangerous, or threatening, or harmful to another student, or a school, or something like that, then we have the ability to see that, to recognize it, to use it, to take action to prevent something, or to help, you know, correct a situation. But no, I'm not in favor of Big Brother, you know, digging into anybody's, you know, media content.
Oh, is that true?
Yeah.
Oh. Wow, these are not yes/no answers. I would say, it is no different than, I always tell, when I was teaching, I'd tell young people, say, you know, whatever you put on social media, people can find you. So it is not about policing, it's about protecting, right? It's about making sure that we have a duty to make sure that our students are safe. So in that vein, yes, but not, as you say, not the kind of like.
Okay, thank you. See, these were short answer questions, right? Okay. Did you get a crack at that one? No?
No.
Did you get a crack at that one?
I don't believe in Big Brother either, but we live in a different world, completely different world. I think we have to monitor any type of hate language, any hate speech, anything out there. We have to monitor this, folks. It's different out there now, sorry.
Okay, so let's see. Now this one will be starting with Rose. Should we continue to have resource officers in the schools?
Oh, well, that's actually a yes. I have to say, the way we have, I guess I can see, sorry, yes, it's a yes, because of the way we do it. Our process is so humanized about how we do it, and the relationship where we build with the SROs is great, and we need them in the schools.
Thank you. Next.
I fully support having SROs in our schools. They're valuable educators, valuable liaison to families, and I hope we have our current issue resolved soon, so, but I fully.
And Mike Bokasiewski.
I agree, yes. I think that, you know, when we had our community discussion on this, we arrived at a point where we recognized their value in Roseville, maybe very different than how it works in other school districts around the country, where there might have been some issues or some, or some, or confusion. But they've been a benefit, and the staff, the teachers, the kids have responded.
These are getting very long sentences.
Okay, I'll just give a short one. And since we made the decision to do that with community support a couple of years ago, nothing's changed. So yeah, I support them. So what the community wants.
Okay. Everybody get a chance on that one?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. The next one, back to the climate. As springs and falls get hotter, do we need to air-condition all of our buildings?
Ooh.
It's me. I would like to say yes, but it's always a manner, it's always still comes down to budgeting. I want our students to be comfortable in the schools, though. If you're really hot, you're really cold.
Thank you.
You can't learn, but.
Yes, and I think we're on that pathway, frankly. I think, you know, it may not be this year, but the way we're spending the funds over 10 years, I think there's a plan to roll it out through all the buildings. I think the only building not on the list is the district center, because the superintendent and her staff can sit and broil or freeze. We put the money for the kids, you know, not.
Yeah, it's a yes, but be fiscally responsible. It's not going to happen tomorrow, but it's definitely something that we need to look into, especially with the changes in climate.
Okay. All right, now we'll go back to the full time. We've got a serious one here. There's been a lot of questions about how we teach history. And I'm going to take two that sort of come at the same thing from different directions and put them together. And this will begin with Rose Chu.
Okay.
One says, how should school leaders respond to a situation where a licensed staff knowingly teaches material that conflicts with the Minnesota state standards, but may coincide with the educator's personal beliefs? And coming from the other side, how do you respond when a parent expresses concern about class content, even though it is in the standards, the state standards? So it's a biggie.
It's a biggie, yes. I would say, if I answer this as an educator, and I have done this role in the district, I would work with the teachers and work with the parents to figure out what is going on. As a school board member, again, that's not my role. If that concern comes to me, I would pull it back on our superintendent and say, could you look into this, figure out what is going on, let's find a way to resolve it. Is it really true that, you know, there are standards that are not met, or there are things that are taught that are not appropriate? Let's work together on that. And a lot of time, are people intentionally doing it, or is it more support the teachers need, in order for them to understand what is needed to be taught for our students to learn to meet the standards? So again, it's not my role. I mean, I'm not in the director of teaching and learning. I mean, that's actually Jake's role, right, and other folks on the cabinet. So I would say, yes, it's a biggie, but also, as a school board member, I would pull it back on management and ask lots of questions. Again, ask lots of questions.
Thank you. Next response from Mike Bokasiewski.
Should a teacher teach something that's counter to the state standards? No. I can't even imagine it happening. I believe that if the building principals or the district leadership found out a teacher were doing that, there'd be at least a conversation, and there'd be something to be corrected there. That's why the state standards exist. Does a parent have a right to pull their kid out if they don't like the state standard? You know, I don't, I don't, my short answer is no, because that's the state standard. To graduate from the state of Minnesota High School, or to matriculate through the system, it's our duty and our job to incorporate those standards into that student's learning. And it's not going to be stuff like, you know, chocolate's better than vanilla. It might be, some people think chocolate is better than vanilla, and some people think vanilla's better than chocolate. But, you know, we don't, there's no positional stuff in there. So if a parent says, for example, you know, well, gee whiz, I know the earth is flat, and you're teaching them the earth is round, so I don't want my kid to have that taught to them, that's silly. So I guess it depends on what it is, but the state standards, they're not opinions, they're facts. They're based on historical truth, they're based on letting a kid know and teaching a kid what has happened in the world, and to create it as it is today, and what they're growing up in. So no, I mean, A, teachers don't do it, won't do it, can't do it, shouldn't do it, won't be allowed to do it. And teachers have a very limited ability to pull kids out of class for state standards, because that's standards. If the school's teaching something you think should be taught differently, that's counter to the state standard, there are other options. There are private schools, there are religious schools. It depends, I think specifically and exactly, what the issue would be, but.
Thank you. And the final response on this question, Todd Anderson.
Thank you. Hate to say, I'm probably going to sound a lot like my colleagues. Counter to state standards, no. Personal beliefs, no. I do know that there are some new social studies standards that we can all comment on right now, whatever colleagues is working on that, and they'll be coming up. And part of those standards are going to be, I mean, let's focus, focusing on history, focusing on some of the good and the bad, just in general. I'm a big blaber. Students, students need to learn about, you know, slavery. They need to learn about the good and the bad of this country. They need to learn more. I think part of those social studies standards is going to be more of an emphasis even on the state's Native American history, history of our indigenous peoples. Those are the standards that, if that's what's out there, they absolutely have to be taught, the good and the bad, so.
Thank you. Okay, next question responses, we'll begin with Todd Anderson. The school board is accountable to multiple groups of stakeholders: students, parents, teachers, other staff, the community, the state. What is the best way to get input from these stakeholders, and how do you balance what may be competing demands?
Wow.
We have to mean it.
We took the whole minute and a half.
Yeah. Over my, over my eight years, and part of this answer, I guess, is just going to be, I mean, experience as a parent, experience as a school board member, but yes, there's a lot of accountability. I take that, to be elected, I take that very, very seriously. That's why I'm a school board member who shows up to events, active in the PTA groups, showing up to the PTA groups. I was at a Brim Hall corn shucking event to highlight our nutrition services department. Parents are coming up to me, you know, call me, email me. This role, as any public official will know, I have neighbors who just stop me. People stop me at restaurants, people who stop me at, you know, just shopping. You know, we're out there. But it's being accountable to the community, it's being accountable to the public. I take that very seriously. But it's being available. That's why I try to attend everything I can, you know, with balancing, yeah, balancing a lot of stuff. Most people don't realize that, I mean, everybody up here, all of our school board members, we have full-time other jobs. You know, we, as a lot of other public officials do have, but it's a challenge. But I welcome that challenge. I love that challenge. It may take a while for us to get back to somebody, but, you know, I welcome it. I pride myself on getting out there, and balancing family as well. But I've always made myself accessible, and I'll continue to do so if elected.
Thank you. Next response from Mike Bokasiewski.
We welcome all input from anybody: students, staff, teachers, community members, parents, family members. Sometimes it feels like the people who drop in are just driving by on Highway 36 and want to come and get something off their chest, but we listen to them. I think part of the job of the school board is to lead. It is to exhibit some leadership, because, I'll tell you this, over the eight years I've been with the board, and especially the two, when I was chair, you might not recognize me if you watched it, because I was wearing a mask the whole time. But, you know, when we were going through the votes and the decisions around masking and closing the schools and social distancing, no matter what we decide, someone's going to hate it, no matter what. It doesn't matter what. And so we can't think of our role as just being a referendum on what a majority thinks, because then you could also get a tyranny of the majority, right? I mean, if we said, oh, we got 10 grand every month to spend on a sport, you know, badminton would never get funded, because everybody would just vote for, you know, hockey, or basketball, or football. You're not evil. You're not like racist against badminton, but that's, it's just how it would come out, because there was natural self-interest. So part of what we do, I think, is make decisions that recognize the tail ends of the curve, protect the folks who need protecting, help the folks who need helping, do real equity. It's not equality, it's equity. And the touchstone, how do you balance all that? You go back to that. You go back to the mission and the vision. I don't think the camera can catch the thing up there, but it's our values. Once you say, what we say to ourselves, what are our values? Tell us about this. How are we guided through our equity lens, and to achieve the value, to achieve the mission of letting, enabling every kid to achieve their goals and their aspirations? What is going to best get us closer to that? That's the touchstone, the north star that we keep going back to to help guide us, I think, when we have conflicting interests.
Thank you.
Can I ask the question again?
Yes. Yes, there we go. There. Okay, the school board is accountable to multiple groups of stakeholders: students, parents, teachers, other staff, the community, the state. What is the best way to get input from these stakeholders, and then how do you balance what may be competing demands?
Yeah. Okay. So I think, beside So I think beside the sort of normal ways, right, you can email us, we are publicly on the website, can call us, our numbers on the website, we have the school board, community input time. As neighbors, neighbors talk to me, they email me, they ask me questions. So there are all those ways, but I do think that we also need ways that are more intentional. And we've talked about that as a board with our superintendent and we've done some of those, where there are intentional platforms or intentional events where we invite those who may otherwise not understand how this all works, okay? How to navigate schools, how to navigate, like, oh, I didn't even know I could call you, I didn't even know that you would listen. Because, you know, in many cultures, authorities, like authorities, even though we don't see myself that way, I always say, you guys are all our bosses, right? So it's like people don't know that. So what does it mean to create those platforms, those community forums, ways to make sure that those who do not get those chances have a way to also, that we can listen to them? And like my colleagues say, we have to balance. We listen to all of it. Ultimately, our vision, our strategic goals, our strategic plan, our mission, guide our decisions centered on our students.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to get another one in here and this will begin with Rose.
Oh.
Okay. So responses will begin with Rose Chu. There's now several of you have at different times mentioned the word, used the word equity. Roseville Area Schools has an official equity statement. I'm going to read the equity statement. The question asked me to read it and the very, it includes a long list of groups that it's recognizing. And then, so feel free to have your paper and pen. Then ask each candidate to state if they agree with the statement in its current form or would they propose changes and what changes, what would they change? Okay. So the statement says, "Through its equity vision, Roseville Area Schools strives for equitable and respectful educational experiences for every student, family, and staff member regardless of race, gender, gender identity, sexual orientation, socioeconomic status, ability, home or first language, national origin, age, and physical appearance."
So the question is if I would change?
Is, "Do you agree with this? Do you, would you change anything? And if so, what might you change?"
Well, this is actually an easy question. No, I will accept this absolutely 100%, okay? And I think most people don't realize that this was also done as part of our strategic planning and the board members were very involved, very involved to make sure that we are all in agreement and that we could actually move forward with this equity statement. So yes, absolutely, 100%. Sure, as I would change. Can I have more time later then? Can I save those time for later?
Okay, next will be Mike Bukasiewski.
Yes, I mean, we helped craft those, you know? There was one, I think, I think both of you, we were all on the board when we added gender identity, if I'm not mistaken. So we believe in that fully. This is at the heart of what we do, to have a school and environment that is welcoming to all, helps all succeed. So equity is something we, and the equity lens, people say, look at stuff through an equity lens. It's, let's say we have a building project, let's say we have something to do with a park, whatever, we'll ask ourselves the question, in doing something, are we going to, we've got to avoid doing it in a way that could be disequitable to a certain group, a certain type of person, a certain class, a certain demographic group, whatever it might be. We look at everything that way to make sure that we are being equitable in all that we do. So, yeah, we wrote it. So, you know, we didn't draft it initially, we inherited it, but I think we've improved it and we've linked in some of those terms as certain identities and certain realities have become more known and awareness of them has arisen within the community, within the country.
Thank you.
Proud of that.
Okay, and the final response on this question, Todd Anderson.
Sorry, folks, this is going to sound pretty much the same. Yes, I absolutely support it. I'll even mention that we even tweaked our mission statement, but we kept equity in it. We are known for equity in this district. We are a model for equity. When we go to AMSD conferences, Minnesota School Board Association conferences, look at what Roseville's doing. Equity. They've even changed their equity statement. We're working with the, working with the community. Our new mission statement is excellence, innovation, and equity in all we do. We kept that in there of how important equity is. I wouldn't change our new statement at all.
Thank you. Okay, I think I'm going to squeeze in one more question, but can we reduce it to one minute instead of a minute and a half? Just squeeze that in before the closing. And maybe, maybe since you've kind of touched on some of this, but let's get philosophical as we wind down. How do you define the purpose of an education? I've got three views here. One is that the purpose of education is to help students acquire subject mastery and knowledge. Malcolm Forbes said, "Education's purpose is to replace an empty mind with an open one." Another view is that it's to teach you how to learn because you have to be a lifelong learner. You always have to be able to gather, analyze, and evaluate information. What do you think the purpose of an education is? And we'll begin with Mike.
All of that, every one of those. They don't compete with each other, they add on to each other. I think that the purpose of an education is to, from an individual perspective, enable one to live the fullest life that they can to the degree they want to. You know, is it that you know good vegetables so you can order great vegetables at your favorite vegetable restaurant? Sure. Is it so you can do calculus if you need it in your job or in your hobby at night? I know many of you probably do calculus at night, right, for a hobby? Not that from school, right? So I think it's all of that, but it's all about how do we live our lives? How do we enjoy our lives? And education is the heart of that. It's the soul of it. And our specific duty as a public school system is to give that common, state-standard guided grounding in things that is the basis and the foundation for people to be able to do that. So if one wants to go out and do more later in life, whether it's self-education, go on to a secondary school, or, you know, go into carpentry, go into a trade, go into the military, whatever they want to do, there's learning there too. But we give them the groundwork, the fundamentals to be able to do that and enjoy a full life.
Thank you. Now to Rose, Rose Chu.
From a social justice standpoint, education is the equalizer. I think about why I went into education and I think about how my parents never finished high school, never went to college. I was the first one to go to college. And what education did for me and how education is meant to make sure that our students, not all our students, have a chance to be the best that they can be, to be a contributing member of the society, to be a critical thinker, and to be happy in a way that they see themselves have a mission, there's a mission in life, whatever that mission is. We all have something. We all have something that is a mission that we have. And to me, that's education. And it's one of the most important things that we can do in life to offer that up to everyone.
Thank you. And the final response and the questions and answer period is from Todd Anderson.
All right. I love how education summarized. It's, to me, it's about being well-rounded. It's critical thinking skills. It's being able to participate as informed citizens in our democracy. And I have to say, I think we sorely need that right now. You know, it's not, you know, yes, growth and development, you know, there's this score and this grade three test or whatever, but it's, again, I go back to looking at our graduation rates. I look at who is graduating from Roseville Area High School or Fairview Alternative High School. I see these students ready to tackle anything. They impressed me so much and what they come back and who they are now and just, Roseville Area Schools was a part of that. We are graduating well-rounded, wonderful, capable students, that that's education to me.
Thank you. You all got a crack at that, right? All right. Okay, that concludes the question and answer portion of the program. We're now going to go to closing statements. I will begin by reading the closing statements submitted by Alan Holasek and Carl Crump. So first with from Alan Holasek. "With less than half of our students proficient in reading and only about one-third of our students proficient in math, it is clear that the incumbent school board members have failed to find effective solutions. To improve our schools, instead of confronting these problems, they have tried to normalize low achievement and hope the public will not notice, but we have noticed. Our students and teachers deserve better. One thing about people on the autism spectrum is when we focus on getting a job done, we get it done. If I am elected, I will make academic achievement and school safety my top priorities. Together, we can make Roseville Area Schools the first-rate school district it once was. If you would like more information about me, visit my website at alanforroseville.com. That's A-L-A-N, the digit four, roseville.com. Or my Facebook page at Alan Holasek for Roseville Area Schools. Thank you." And from Carl Crump. "Three of the current school board members are up for reelection. With half of our kids not reading at grade level and two-thirds behind in math, the incumbents cannot run on their own. Academics are the main point of school and the results are abysmal. This is urgent. We can't keep electing the same people to keep voting unanimously on every issue and then somehow miraculously expect a better result. We need change. We need someone like me who will bring fresh ideas and prioritize academics above all else so all kids achieve. If you would like more information about me, please see my website at www.carlforroseville.com. And that's Carl with a K, the digit four, and then Roseville. Or my Facebook page, Carl for Roseville Area Schools. I hope to shake your hand at a game or when I'm out door knocking." Thank you. That was Carl Crump's. And now we will take those present, their final statements in reverse order, so Mike Bukasiewski goes first of these three.
How much time is this?
Two minutes.
Two minutes? Okay, so this is a critical election. I think it's super critical. I think that the reason we're running is because we also feel fundamentally, I can't even state this strongly enough, there is no more important thing than academic achievement for our kids. We are, we are dead set, committed to improving that. We have made improvements in some of our reading and our math scores. We have some way to go. We have to recover from the pandemic. We've implemented programs like the letters program, like the Avid program that Todd mentioned earlier, where we're spending money on programs and on staff to help those kids that need it most. And we're struggling to overcome the so-called achievement gap, where it is still true that in our schools, it's predictable based on a demographic, like your skin color, it's predictable that that group will generally have less success than a white group. That's a tragedy. And if you don't think we care about that, then you're not paying attention because that is our number one concern right now, is getting the scores back up and enabling success for all students and in that same process, cutting down and working to eliminate that achievement gap. So our work has just, it's begun, but we want to keep going. Now is not the time to pull back on that. Now is not the time to pull back on the commitment to equity for LGBTQ plus kids, for transgender kids. Now is not the time to pull back on anything that we put into place to really continue marching towards those goals that we have of a superior education for all. I believe we've done a good job. I'm proud of us. I'm proud of the work that I've done with my colleagues and the three other incumbent board members who aren't running this year. I sincerely hope that you will vote for me and for Todd and for Rose to allow us to continue to do the work that we've been doing for you and for your kids and not fall prey to some of the disingenuous things that are out there that you might be hearing. I think we're doing a good job and I'm proud of it and hope I can earn your vote. Mike B. for Schools. Thank you.
Thank you. The next closing statement will be from Rose Wanmu Chu.
So first of all, thank you to the League of Women Voters for having this platform for us to talk and thank you for all of you for being here. I've never done this before, so this is quite an experience. I would say that a year ago, I told this story to some people, a year, was it a year ago, we all had a little card that we wrote about something that you want to tell yourself a year later, you know, what those letter to yourself. And I remember opening that letter and I was almost like in tears. It literally say, "If you are thinking about running or not running for the school board, remember that your values totally align with Roseville Area Schools." And that's what I'm here. And it's work to do. I'm proud of the work we've done together and yet there's a lot more to do. And so I would love to continue supporting our superintendent, supporting this strategic plan that we just started almost, that based on so many input from our community so that we could actually continue the work to close that gap that we have and really support our students to be the best that they can be. So my literature is out there and the website that has all three of us is abc4623.com. Sorry. Oh, I have 30 seconds. Wow, okay. Yeah, wow, thank you. And you can always find me at 651-329-5952. That's my cell phone number. And for the campaign, you can email me at rosechu623@gmail.com. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And the final closing statement from Todd Anderson.
Thank you. Thanks again to the League of Women Voters of Roseville Area for sponsoring this forum and to all of you for attending. I just got to be honest, I'm disappointed that not all of our candidates showed up to participate this evening. I know there were statements. I know we got challenges ahead, folks, but they weren't here answering questions. So I think you deserve to know what is at stake in this school board election. I think you all know by now that there is a team up here that has proven experience, a team that is committed to our new mission statement and our equity vision, a team that will provide stable and thoughtful leadership. When you're at your polling location, either before or, you know, before or on November 7th, and you're having trouble recalling whom to vote for, just remember your A, B, C's. And I'm done.
Thank you. Okay. And I get the last word here, so thank you all. That wraps up our forum and what an interesting evening it has been. Obviously, there are many topics that we did not have time to touch on and many subtleties within the topics we did discuss. So feel free to check out websites, literature, talk to the candidates. And I remind you that all opinions expressed tonight are those of the candidates, not the League of Women Voter. We do not endorse anyone. I want to thank all seven candidates for the, running for the school board, for stepping up to run for office. It's not easy and it is a great responsibility. We need participation in all aspects of democracy for it to work, from the informed voter to the elected official. A special thanks to the candidates with us tonight for sharing their time, knowledge, and positions with us. Thanks to the audience for their attention and good questions. Thanks to the camera crew from District 623 and my league colleagues for making this all come together. Check out http colon slash slash mediaisd623.org for rebroadcast schedule, but it's on Nine North, the district, and there should be a link up on the league site soon. To all listening now, you have more information, please ponder your options seriously and then please vote on or before Tuesday, November 7th. Early voting is already open. And encourage your family, friends, and neighbors to vote thoughtfully. If anyone needs to update their registration, request an absentee ballot, locate an in-person polling place, or track a ballot, go to mnvotes.gov. That's easy to remember and it takes you to the election information on the website of the Secretary of State's office. It has lots of answers in about 10 languages. Thank you for listening. Good night and good luck.[1775.73]